Currently riding to class because why I'm running late for my long test but have a physical exam today and So I went to the dining hall and got my lunch, I just got a pack and now I'm walking to the dissection halls for my mass dissection. Hey guys, so just a little bit of an update, I'm currently back in my room, it's like half past 12 And for those that know, maybe wondering like how is it half past 12? And you're back in your room while dissections ended half past 1? So what happened is, as we're busy dissecting, so today there were two things happening in the dissection halls. First of all, like the normal dissections and today we're supposed to dissect the food and also the joints. So we're supposed to expose a lot of the muscles, look at them and everything, look at the joints. That was the outline for today's dissection. And the second thing is that we're having a picture day. So in the sections, we have different tables and each table has six students in it, so like each, like six students share one cadaver basically. So we have different tables and yeah, so we're supposed to take pictures um as the different tables, like each table was supposed to come up with a name for their group, for their table and then um we just take pictures um like for today. So yeah, we got there and then they told us the outline, like what we're supposed to do, we're supposed to make incisions and everything. So we got there, we uncovered our cadaver's feet. We propped them on, I don't know what those things are called, but we just like elevated them a little bit, then we started cutting, started um dissecting and we did all of that. Um we didn't like, we did a lot of that and as we were doing all of that, they were like calling the different tables to um where we're taking pictures. So they just basically have this board and they just write your table number and the name of your table. So we just did that, we took the pictures, like every table was able to take pictures. Fine, so we were like the last table to take pictures, they're like four, there were four groups today in our dissection um rotation. But yeah, we, so every group got to take pictures, perfect, lovely, we loved that for everyone. So we took pictures and then we went back to our table. So we are busy going about dissecting, removing, reflecting the skin, so that we can expose the muscles and all of that. The power went goes out, it's like suddenly dark, like just dark. And they were like, obviously they were like um everyone calm down, just don't move because like we're holding sharp things, we're holding scalpels and all of that, so like no one moved, just stay still until we give like you guys um um a go ahead on what like the next plan of action is, like this backup. So we're just gonna wait for that to kick in. So we're just waiting there in the dark, waiting for the backup to kick in, it never did. So they were like there, there's like a room, I think it's a lecture hall, I'm not sure, that's like, it's like a room with tables and chairs. They're like, you guys can go there and wait in there, that part had like lights. So like you can go there and wait in there while we figure it out, because like just being in the dark with sharp objects, it's like not safe. So the TAs and the lecturer came with like a torch and they like torched us to put our stuff, to leave our dissection um like our scalpels and forceps to leave them on the dissection tables and we went to the room. So we're just waiting there, waiting for the go ahead, waiting for them to tell us what the next plan of action is. And they were like, okay, we're gonna wait for 15 minutes and if the power is still not back by then, then we'll just release you guys, like there's nothing we can do. So we're waiting there, people were coming in and out, checking, I don't know what they were checking, but I didn't wanna be checked because it was not, it was not cooperating whatever they were checking and lastly they were like, okay. Seems like it's the Royal University, like the Royal School, um Medical School. The power went out um and the backup is not back upping, so they're like, okay, it's fine. So they ushered us back into the dissection hall and we just um cleaned our scalpels, forceps. And we cleaned them, took off our gloves, disposed everything which just left. So, so much for the last dissection of second year. So yeah, that was, that didn't go as planned. So that was the last dissection of second year. Yeah, we're done dissecting cadavers, like it's been amazing, honestly, it's been tiring, but it's been amazing to learn about the human body um through a hu- like through a human body, it's been great because as much as um textbooks are available, YouTube videos are available, like doing the real thing, you being the one who's hands-on, seeing the connections, seeing the difference, like how it actually looks. Because there was so many things that I was actually surprised in, like the actual size, for example, the stomach, like how it was shaped, the size, the brain, like there were just different things in G, like if I hadn't had the opportunity to dissect um I wouldn't have known, like what kind of things they are, I wouldn't have known, I wouldn't have appreciated it, the human body and everything. So I'm just super grateful um for this opportunity to learn um through the human body. But yeah, that is the wrap for second year dissection, second year is the legit labs. Yeah, second year slowly coming to an end, next week is the first week of test week, then the second week, then yeah. Yeah, guys, yeah, this year went by so quick, but I just wanted to like let you guys know, so right now I left my room in such a mess, it's like I was rushing to only to like, only for the test to start late, so. But let me clean up my room and also make food, I'm probably gonna make noodles because I took a pack, not knowing that you're gonna get it early. So I'm probably gonna make noodles, but yeah. Hey guys, so a little bit of an update, so right now it's currently like half past five. And so after like I vlogged, after I had my lunch, I just did my Bible study. Because I said in the morning I was rushing, so I didn't get the time to do it. So I just did that and then I took a nap. I woke up now and went to the dining hall and got my dinner, so I'm just gonna eat that right now. So what I wanna do right now is, since today is the 1st of October, just gonna plan the month, um write down my due dates and everything so that I don't not miss them. So I'm just gonna do that right now, then I'm, as I do that, I'm just gonna be waiting for Hope to text me and tell me that um she's on her way, so you're gonna go to study at medical school again. But yeah, I put my mirror back up, so that's why I'm leaning towards this direction, even though the lighting is better this way. Okay, we can do this, but yeah. Hey guys, so I am back in my room, it's like quarter to 12. And yeah, I'm back in my room from medical school, so um an update on my to-do list, so I was able to finish the endocrine and you, you and the crinology lectures, because I did two of them and yeah, as I showed you guys. And um I did, I did angry like in the afternoon, like as you guys saw. So yeah, I think I can count that and then what else? I wanted to do um more med, I forgot what the topic is, but it's concepts of something, it's on my to-do list. I wanted to do that, but in order for me to be able to do that, I needed to print some notes and annotate on them, but I went to the like, literally went to the printing um room, as you guys saw in the library. And I had like, um these lectures are for last week, so I had like five lectures to print. And literally only four came out and guess what, the one that I wanted to do today didn't come out, like I didn't wanna print out. So I was like, okay, it's fine, I'll just come back later, let me do physiology in the meantime, then I'll just come back and try again later. So I did the two de crinology lectures, lectures and then I went back to try and print again and still I didn't wanna print out. So I was like, eh, at this point, it's fine, I won't do it. Now, okay, let me try doing um, what's this? Um I need to me the hip and the knee joint, but I just, we had like Bible study to do, so we had to stop that and then do Bible study. And now I am back in my room, so right now I'm just gonna do the hip and knee joints on my I'm just gonna watch the videos on YouTube, so I'm just gonna um do that. Like and I'll be done with that section, so that's all that I'm gonna do. Um for those, for that topic. And then um, yeah, I think, oh yeah, and I tried again to print out that lecture that didn't wanna print. I came back to raise and I used the printer downstairs, someone literally printed before me and it came out, like everything was fine. And then when it's my turn, it doesn't wanna print out, so. Actually, as I was saying before, my phone done out of storage, I'll just take it as a side, honestly. Try it now, I'm just gonna change it to my pyjamas and then watch those two videos, then I'm gonna call it a day. So tomorrow I have an endocrineology tutorial, so I'm just gonna wake up in the morning, do as many lectures as I can. I think there's 16 and I did until 6 today, I think. But yeah, um that's it for today. See you all see yous tomorrow. Hey guys, I'm Dean, Mohammed and you, there's a lot going on here. I'm not sure I'm following and ish. Eh, here. You're cool. They are mentioning some big names, they're not even on the lecture slides, like I don't even know what's going on. Kuning. Kuning. But I wanted to mention something before I forget again. So last week, as I was like on my way to the library from buying lunch, I came across a subscriber, I didn't get her name, but then she basically mentioned um how she watches my videos and how she enjoys them, I just wanted to come on here and say thank you for those kind words and thank you for watching. If you're watching this, like thank you so much for actually coming up and saying hi, like trust me. I needed that on that day because you, I was going through it, that day name, I was going through it and then her just coming up and talking to me just really cheered me up, it was at medical school. But yeah, it was nice meeting you and thank you so much for the kind word, they really mean a lot and I also really, really appreciate your support in watching my vlogs and actually interacting with me, like seeing me in person and saying hi, I really do appreciate it. And also like to everyone else that has said hi and I might not have mentioned in the vlog because I was not like vlogging on that day. But I also remember there was this other guy, he told you that he does first year medicine. I just don't remember his name, we went on the bus and he actually said hi, that he watches my vlog and that they were helpful when he was coming to university and like those kind of kind words and comment really mean a lot to me and I just wanna say thank you guys so much, like thank you, thank you, thank you. And I really, really do appreciate it. And yeah, that's what I wanted to say. So it's currently 25 minutes past five, let me take a five minute break. And then I'm gonna come back, um hope that she's gonna take the six o'clock pass. So yeah, that's the plan. Hey guys and happy Thursday, you're almost at Friday, but yeah, today feels like a Friday. Thing mainly because I'm skipping my PSE today. Yeah, um yeah, skipping it. I have my reasons and they are valid, in my opinion, but yeah. So I'm just gonna, you guys, all of my nails, I removed them and then the thumbs, like they're stuck on the but yeah, hopefully they'll be out by tonight. Um I also cut my clothes, I don't know if you guys saw that, but then I cut them on Monday, I think. Yeah, but I went to the dining hall, I just came back and I got lunch. I got a chicken burger and I'm just gonna eat this. Um I think I might make some oloos. Just eat with it, because I was thinking of taking Coke, but hey, drinking Coke at this time of the month. Yeah, I was gonna regret, regret it, but yeah. Um I wanted to say something, the reason why I started this clip was, um as I, as I was coming back up from the uh dining hall in the lift, I met a subscriber, her name is Kiara and, and yeah, she basically just seeing how I'm taking long to upload and like she saw like my previous, not previous to this, but then there's this video, the the one where there was date night, the first concert that vlog, um how I uploaded it first and then deleted it, she was like, girl, what is going on? But yeah, um thank you so much for engaging with my content. Like you realizing those kind of things shows already you really do watch my vlogs and that you really like, you're really a loyal subscriber, so I just wanna say thank you so much for all the support. You see now, like how happy I am, like guys, interacting with you guys just in person means so much to me and I really really, really appreciate, like it actually keeps me going, not gonna lie, because now I'm motivated to edit my next vlog. Like I have the one that I'm uploading on Sunday, it's ready. I'm gonna get the one I'm uploading on Wednesday, it's ready, today, today. So yeah, thank you guys so much for being patient. And yeah, she was saying that she was like rewatching my old vlogs while she was like waiting for new ones and like oh guys, that means a lot, it really means a lot, it does. And just wanna say thank you guys so much for keeping up with my content, staying um patient when I take a while-ish. But then this test next season, I've prepared in advance, so I won't go MIA. Yeah, yeah, but let me eat and then um just gonna go through the lectures that I was supposed to go through yesterday and the current cause of um what's this, of the elections. But um yeah, let's get the day started. Hey guys, so it's 2 o'clock and I just submitted the PSE. Yeah, that was long, but I'm glad I'm done with it and right now I just placed an order for pick and pay. Um so I'm just gonna wait for that, I just bought some stuff that I couldn't like wait for the weekend to go to Rose Bank and get, so just opted to get them online. So this is gonna happen, I got on half past two, two, three. So I'm just gonna wait for that and then in the meantime, you guys, I'm having the worst period cramps. So what am I do um right now? I'm just gonna edit a vlog. And I took a painkiller, so that will give me time to work. So I can actually focus on studying instead of like being in pain every few minutes. Actually, that's the update, yeah. Currently on my way to fetch my delivery. Guys, I'm not the only one who doesn't like the pick and pay, like map thing, like because now it says the driver will be on their way shortly, that time the driver is at the gate. Hey guys, so I just came back from um the main gate. So I only got three things, like I said, I didn't see any, but the first thing I got was an EcoStella gel, I didn't know it was the small one, but it will work because I will it. Hmm, I didn't notice the small, I yeah, it has to work. Because yeah, I don't, you guys know that I don't use like gel to do my edges, so that won't be a problem, so. Because I'm gonna undo my hair tomorrow, Friday, and I'm gonna braid it next week, Thursday. Next, yeah, so in the meantime, like yeah, um I'm gonna be doing slick bags, so that's why I bought the gel. And yeah, I just bought this one because yeah, I had the Native Child one, but I don't know what happened to it. It just has some white spot in it and it was not like in the sun, because I know like if you put it in the sun, there was this other gel I had before and if you, I put it in the sun and thank you, it turns somehow on it. So if anyone knows why I did that, I threw it out, so can't show you guys, but yeah, so I got um EcoStella for slick bags, not my edges, because my edges for it to work, I think I'd have to relax them and yeah, no, I'm chop away vibe, but says for all hair types. The, and then the second thing I got was a vaseline, um what is this called? Lip therapy, um I tried this first when I was in Rustenberg, my sister's one. One thing about being a little sister, when you have an older sister, like her beauty products are like your own little Sephora, I don't know what is the equivalent of Sephora in South Africa, but it's like your own little beauty store. Where you can like try something, you can trial it and with her stuff and then they said if you wanna get it. For example, the sunscreen that I use now, I tried hers first and I liked it and I'm using it now. And even with this, I tried it, I liked it and I bought it. Sometimes I take them, but yeah, this time I tried to, I tried to be a considerate little sister and not, but hmm, it smells so nice. So moisturizing. And then the last thing I got. These are my second favorite candies, you guys know the first ones are the um double hats, the like a double hats, but those ones, I think they can only be worn in PEP and this is a pick and pay order, so I had to settle for the second best. So I'm just gonna have this to keep me going through test week. Yeah, I'm not really a sweet person, but this. I mean, I didn't have breakfast, I didn't have anything. It's gonna be a long day, but yeah, let's go to. So we are done with the tutorials currently three o'clock. I'm not even done with all of the hormones. We just had to send the rest on the WhatsApp chat. But yeah, I'm so tired, the last hour, I didn't hear anything, like. I have a headache, I am tired, like. Uh-uh, uh-uh, but yeah, we started, I had it all the way. So let me go back to my room, I need to make a few phone calls and then I'm gonna sleep. Hey guys, so right now it's currently half past ten and I've just been doing some lectures for, what is this? Um physiology, so I've just finished two. Um the pancreas, the hormones and like diabetes, we just finished that. And the last, um how many lectures are left? The last five lectures are on um the re- the reproductive system. So I'm just gonna start there. So I'm taking a bit of a break right now and then I'm gonna um finish those four lectures. They're not that long, it's like approximately four twenty-minute lectures, so I think I'll just be done with that. Pretty quick, but let me just take my break and then I'm gonna come back and study some more. But after the tutorial, it took like a three-hour nap, like it was unplanned, cause I slept for like an hour. I had set an alarm. It rang, I looked at it, I don't remember what happened after. I just remember waking up at seven o'clock. And as you guys know, I don't know if you guys know, but then dinner ends at six, so I missed dinner, so I had to make noodles. So I made that and ate, as you guys saw. By share, now I'm just gonna continue with this. And then at one o'clock, one A M, probably gonna do my laundry. And then yeah, that's it. Good morning guys and happy Sunday. So right now it's currently eleven minutes past twelve. And I just woke up a little while ago and I did some studying, I think you guys, I think I yeah, blocked that. I did some studying and then I took a shower, I went to the dining hall and I got a la- I got my lunch, I got a pack for lunch. And then right now I'm just back in my room, I'm gonna eat and then um it's this. At quarter to one, I'm gonna go back to studying-ish. I don't know, I'm conflicted on whether to finish physiology or starting anatomy. But I think I'm just gonna finish physiology, cause I'm never that one and a half lecture. So I'm just gonna finish those two and then start anatomy. But then later I have church, um gonna leave with the five o'clock. Um second bus, yeah, to go to church. And then when I come back, um more studying, probably gonna do Anki when I get back. Tomorrow, um okay, tomorrow's gonna be in tomorrow's vlog, um in the next vlog, I mean. But yeah, today's gonna be the last day of this vlog. Hope you guys have enjoyed it. But um yeah, let me eat while watching Netflix and then gonna go back to study. So this is where I'm gonna end the vlog. Currently walking to church. Hang out, see you guys in the next video. Thank you guys so much for watching. Don't forget to like, comment, share, subscribe. Share with your friend and don't skip, I'll be, don't skip the S. Yeah, see you guys in my next time.